Okay, we are live on Facebook.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and ladies and gentlemen, online. This is Tuesday, March 23rd at 6:02. And welcome to our City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting. We are continuing the electronic meeting pursuant to Governor Lee's Executive Order Number 16 and subsequent orders and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The March 23rd, 2021 Gallatin Council Committee Meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be a livestream to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and citizens of Gallatin. Join the Zoom meeting at us02web.zoom.us/... I, no, I'm sorry, that's J/83660704681. Or dial 1-470-250-9358, or 1-470-381-2552. And enter webinar ID 36... I'm sorry, 3... Let me go back again. Webinar ID is 83660704681.
Most approved.
Second.
Motion by Jimmy Olberton and second by J.D. Alexander. Ms. Kitchell, would you call the roll to accept this reading?
Yes, ma'am. Do you want the roll and the approval for the minutes? I mean, approval of the electronic meeting at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay. Vice Mayor Fennel.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes, here.
Councilman Fann.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Overton.
President, and here.
Okay.
And yes.
Thank you. The vote is seven zero, and we have a forum.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the February 23rd minutes?
Most approved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? That's a, Jimmy Olberton says approval, and it is second by Johnson L.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fennel.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Seven eyes and zero nays.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public recognition, and that's for anything that is on the agenda or off the agenda. So if anyone wants to talk about it, we open up that opportunity. We also want to please ask that you dispense from using names of anyone that's on the council or anyone else, and to please avoid any disparaging remarks about any of the members or anyone else. And we open up the forum for public recognition.
Thank you, ma'am. I see a couple of people are using the raise your hand function, which is what you should do. If you're calling by cellphone, you would hit star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, just mouse over the bottom of your screen, and you'll see the raise your hand function there. Let's start with Pascal Juvance. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening all. Good evening, Mayor. Nice seeing you today. I've been looking at this, Councilman Alexander, nice to seeing you, good looking today.
Thank you.
We've been looking at these meetings for years now, and I thought that's in the worst of it, but all my beer, I think last week was probably the best one I ever seen. We had the Councilman Alexander, who looked good tonight, who feel good, probably was looking really sick last week. And, you know, I'm wondering if you, if you're that sick, you shouldn't stay at home and not come to a council and don't come to the city hall. I'm pretty sure if I'd been that sick and step in a city hall, somebody would have asked me to go away. But, you know, we know why you were here, that was for the votes. And second thing, I sent an email to our mayor to tell her how disappointed I was at what happened regarding the appointment to replace, the temporary appointment to replace our chief. You know, the mayor presented two qualified candidate, qualified candidate, who got turned down by all of you, so somebody who, a body can be appointed at their, at the spot, including the fact he's not qualified for the on, on mayor's words. So I would say disappointed, yes, not surprised at all, because I read the article, and the chief got in the paper, and he said that, one of his words was that he was feeling that for all these years, you had made him feel he was an outsider, and I know the feeling, because you did that to me too. And you replaced it by a body of use, an insider. So again, in my book, I call that corruption, but you call it the way you want. And Jeff, Michelle want to say something?
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Hall of Pike. I wanted to talk about one of the items that's on the agenda tonight. The annexation plan of service study. I read it earlier. Can't think of the name of the development right this second. There's a lot right now of annexations, but the one on the, it's on the east side of town.
Bloodsow Springs.
Thank you. Bloodsow Springs. So again, like I was saying several times before about, I'm concerned about how these annexations, like the Bloodsow Springs and the Twin Eagles, for example, are on the edges of town, and both of the plans of services for those two annexations are saying that fire stations are going to be needed, and that's going to cost a lot of money and capital expense. And that's something that I haven't heard a peep from y'all talk about that. And I think that that's something that's, that's a big deal, and I'd like to hear it discussed. And can we afford it? And when can we afford it? And how are we going to pay for that? Are we going to take out more bonds to pay for these two new fire stations that are required? Police, more police service, more police cars, police officers? These are things that are, for these particular annexations, including Bloodsow Springs and Twin Eagles, those are both something that I think is going to make our taxes go up. And I don't like that. I'm not happy about that. When I looked at these, both of those studies, the report said that they are not going to pay for themselves. It was, they stated that it was going to have to be made up somewhere else in the budget, and that means us that already live here. So as our representatives, I think that you all need to really consider that. I mean, I've heard a lot of talk about traffic and how the traffic is going to be a problem. Yeah, sure, that's going to be a problem for the people who live over there, but what about us who actually live in the city? The problem for us is going to be, how are we going to pay for those fire stations? And that's what I think you all need to be talking about more than the traffic. So anyway, I know I've said it a million times, but I think it's an issue, and that was what I was wanting to bring to your attention again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have someone named U705AC. Just before you start, please state your name and your address.
My name is Mr. Patrick Reeners. I've been a citizen in Gallatin since 1998. And I want to say thank you to all the city council, and thank you to all the commenters. But there's one thing I want to say to the citizens and the commenters and the involved and not involved, the mayor, all the council people.
Could we get your address?
Oh, it's 317 Malone Drive.
Thank you.
I would think that if I was addressing city council, I would come up with pinpoints and information to help them address what I was talking about. I would be understanding. They would be able to understand me. I wouldn't be just throwing things out there, asking everyone to make comments without coming out with a direct approach, trying to help the people I was trying to talk to about making governmental decisions, which I've done before. So I want to let anybody know that if anybody's trying to play games with this city, it ain't the city to play games with. All right, they grew, trying to grow more. Insight into what they're doing is great. If you spent 10 years not putting any insight into any issues here, I don't believe you have an opinion. So people that want to try to help this city and try to make it grow forward shouldn't try to find problems, they should find the rectification for the problems they're talking about and show them the way to try to help it and come up with a device and try to help your city. It's not a bitch session, excuse my friends, I'm sorry. It's not, it's not, it's not a complaining session. These people are here to help the city. So people can't come here to tell the people how to try to help the city. Just talk to them on the side or something, make a point. Don't come here and try to get clout. This ain't a clout chasing thing. I love this city. Mr. Pat Greeners, I'm signing out.
Thank you, sir.
Another second here, checking our attendees. I believe that's it, everyone.
Thank you, Jeff. We'll move on to our, the public recognition is now closed, and let's move on to our mayor's comments, please.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things that I want to share with you, although I will warn you, I have lots of items for other business tonight. First of all, congratulations and a sincere thank you to Gap Inc. I don't know if you saw the news yesterday, but they have committed to investing an additional $83 million in Gallatin and hiring 600 more people. So our Economic Development Agency has worked well with them for a long time and has helped them along the way, but I think moreover, Gap has helped Gallatin and our residents. So we're very excited that they continue to show commitment here and really long-term investment. And so that's exciting, and should make us all feel good about what our city has to offer to an organization like Gap Inc. and, and supporting what they do. Also want to mention that this past weekend, that Miss Tennessee Outstanding Team was held here in Gallatin, and the lady that organizes the pageant, or I don't think pageant's the word I'm supposed to be using these days, Jimmy, competition, I guess, Jimmy knows more about it than I do, but I will make sure you use the right word. But anyway, it's a scholarship pageant and part of the Miss America Organization, and so the Miss Tennessee was held here in Gallatin for outstanding team competition. And the lady that organizes it and puts her heart and soul, along with lots of knowledge and experience into it, is a local lady, Ms. Holly Alexander, Holly Harris Alexander, I should say, and she just does an amazing job. She really pours a lot into these young ladies and helps them. Whether they succeed in the competition or not, helps them become better young women, and, and I just really admire how she handles all that she does. Probably the best news about the pageant this past weekend was that a Gallatin girl won, I should say, a Gallatin young lady won the Miss Tennessee title. Her name is Taylor Black, and she's from Gallatin. And I first became acquainted with her, I guess it was the year before last now, because I think COVID stalled everything, but amazingly lovely lady and talent like you would not believe. She's got a voice that I could listen to all day, every day. And so we're going to follow her as she goes to the national competition and wish you luck and get behind her. So I just wanted to share that with you all, and those are the only two things I have this evening under mayor's comments.
Thank you. That's great news. Okay, let's move on to our agenda, and our first item is for Bill McCord.
Okay. Can you, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Great. Okay, this first item tonight is the annexation study report on the Bloodsow Springs annexation. As you recall, Bloodsow Springs is a proposed development on the east side of town, on the north side of Hartsfield Pike, a little bit just east of Airport Road, and it comprises about 47 acres. And this area, this map shows that portion of the area over there adjacent to the old railroad right of way that is subject to annexation. They have a preliminary master development plan with all single-family homes, and it's been through in a couple of iterations. And of course, y'all had a presentation on that. So the annexation study was completed, and you have that in your agenda package. It indicates that they will generate slightly less revenue than projected expenses under current operating characteristics of the city. One, one thing that I want to mention is that the roadway maintenance projections are not likely to occur within the first 10 years. There'll be probably not as much roadway maintenance as, as we project in the 10-year expenditures, because it will take some time for build-out and formal acceptance of those roads, and they'll still be in good shape for well after 10 years of, after plating. But the difference is about $10,000, a little over $10,000 in revenue each year, probably after that 10-year period, that, that there'll be a shortfall, if you will, just for this development. But keep in mind that almost all residential development is not revenue positive for the city. The city generally gets most of their revenue benefits from the commercial and industrial property. So I just want to let you know that, and if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So moving right along, we have item number two, and that is presented by Nick Tuttle.
Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of Nick Tuttle, and I'm happy to be presenting about the traffic signal warrant study at the intersection of Airport Road and Cairo Road. So as you all may know, in May of 2019, the relocation of Airport Road project was completed, and that moved the intersection of Cairo Road about 400 feet to the west. And this realignment has caused some visibility issues for vehicles turning from Cairo onto Airport Road. We were asked by several citizens about the possibility of installing a traffic signal. So we listened to those responses and proceeded with a traffic signal warrant study. The study has been completed, and the results showed that a traffic signal is marginally warranted at this intersection. In addition, if a signal is installed, the posted speed limit of the realigned portion of Airport Road could be revised from 40 miles per hour to 45 to better accommodate driver behavior and improve the uniformity of speeds along Airport Road. So yeah, in conclusion, the traffic study said that a signal is marginally warranted at the Cairo Road intersection, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
So it sounds like we do need it there, which is what I saw myself driving back and forth on that road. So what's the next step?
So the, the next step would be to get a cost estimate together to come before y'all to see about getting that appropriated. And then, you know, go, go from there. Now, the, the signal is marginally warranted, so it's, it's not like it met the warrants. It's, it's not necessarily an emergency, but it is met so that we can install a signal at that location.
So will y'all come back, will y'all come back to us with a cost estimate, like, pretty soon?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Hayes. I think there's a, a base estimate for an intersection and signalization that is right at $250,000. That's the one that occurred at Harris Road and 31E that was just put in there, Blue Jay Way, right there. And I think that's a fairly base estimate. It could be a little bit more, could be a little bit less, but I think that's a good base number to start with.
That's, that's correct. A good ballpark number that we have on our sureties for developments is 250,000, and that does include the cost for design of the traffic signal as well as the installation.
Okay.
Which budget does that money come out of?
And any chance of any grants, too?
I'm not so sure about the, the grant portion of that. And having a brief conversation with, with Nick, he felt that we could absorb the, the cost for the actual, like, design of the intersection, but then we would be looking for the actual construction of the signal to be appropriated.
I was just going to add in there that I did ask Mr. Tuttle to make sure that T-Dot is informed of this development, since it says shortly after that road was constructed, and part of the issue is the site distance, and see what they might be willing to do. But that's where we are.
So I actually did send them this warrant study, so I'll be looking for their, their feedback on this.
Okay. Just keep us posted on it. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So from, what would be the timeline from having a cost and installation?
So to use what Mr. Fenton was talking about earlier, the Blue Jay Way signal, we received a professional service agreement in September of 2018. The design was completed around March of 2019. The bid for construction was June of 2019, and then it was completed around June of, of 2020. The, the biggest part of the traffic signal installation is the manufacturing of the mast arm poles. There's only one or two companies that do that, and they get really backed up. I know with the Blue Jay Way project in particular, it took us over eight months to get the actual signal poles.
Wow.
Biggest holdup.
So we could be a year away.
And that same timeline adheres to our lighting of the new Gateway Drive and 25 that's coming out there, the Gateway Drive extension. And we're looking at eight to 10 months for the reception of those mast arms.
Yeah. Okay. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Does anybody have the name of the company that manufactures those?
I'm sure they do. I mean, because we went through that when we did the Blue Jay Way. It's a company located in another state somewhere, but they're just, they're just that, that backorder.
It wouldn't be in Barto, Florida, though, would it?
Belmont manufactures a lot of poles.
Yeah. Barto's located, they have a plant in Barto, Florida.
It was UMIC that did the poles for the Blue Jay Way signal. Union Metal Industries Corporation.
New clear. Dave Fann.
Mr. Fenton?
I was just letting Mr. Fann know that, yes, he has a bead on the company that's doing that. And if there is that one company, for the most part, is doing that for all the United States, one thing that happens is when there's a tornado or a, an event off the ocean, anything like that, that everybody has to order from the same company at this time. And I'm triggered, you realize that, Steve?
Sounds like some competition should be going out there.
Are we saying we, we're, or we have to order from which company?
UNIC, I think is the name.
It was UNIC. The, the bid was, went to Stansel Electric, and UMIC was who they ordered from. I don't know if there's a different company, but that's just who they chose to order from.
He would be bidding this.
Yeah, it goes out to bid.
We've got an indirect contact with one of those companies that you may not be aware of, and we might could speed up the process.
All right, let's move on. Item number three, Gracie Lake drainage discussion, Public Works.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This item is on here at the request of, we've had several different members of the Fairview community, along with representatives of HOA. And what this item is, is we, there's some drainage issues in the Gracie Lake area, which is a private portion of Fairview Plantation. And what kind of distinguishes it from other parts of Fairview is that it's all the infrastructure in there is privately maintained. It was, when it was, that development was built and approved, it was, they didn't go through the senior view process as a public subdivision would. So think of it kind of similar to a Walmart parking lot, where it's all privately maintained and not maintained by city tax dollars. So there are drainage issues in this subdivision that stem from drainage coming off of grassland, which is a public roadway. And, and what the, what the issue is, is some of the water coming off of grassland, the stormwater infrastructure that was approved never was built with the Gracie Lake development. So it's causing, as it, development has been built out, it has caused some drainage issues within Gracie Lake. And as far as the city, we haven't been able to really provide any kind of help, just because all of that infrastructure in there is private, and from a legal standpoint, we're not, we don't have the ability to do any kind of maintenance or work on that, on that infrastructure. So this has been going on for several months. We've been working with HOA to try to facilitate getting the issues taken care of, and up to this point, haven't really been able to get anything resolved. We have provided some different scenarios on what would kind of fix the problem. And, but at this point, nothing's been resolved. So at the request of the HOA, and then also members or some of the residents affected by the issue, we did want to put it on the agenda, and I believe there is a representative of the HOA on this call, Vaughn Oakley. We want to give him a chance to speak. He, he requested, I guess, state HOA's concerns and case.
Mr. George, if I could ask one question, Zach or Susan or somebody might want to ask this, then a few years ago, and I don't know what year it was, didn't we, didn't we spend a lot of money down there to try to resolve this issue? Did it never get resolved, or what's the situation with it?
Not that I'm aware of. Now, back when Fairview was being developed, and we called all the bonds in Fairview to finish out the development, when the developer went under, the HOA was given, I think it was like $108,000.
$140,000.
$140,000 to finish out the infrastructure that, some of which was subsequently not built, is, is what's causing this issue essentially. So the city did, it wasn't the city, it was the.
Bond company.
On, I mean, right. That's all the project I'm aware of.
And didn't everything do city?
But wasn't this, wasn't this part of that that was probably fixed?
I can, I can speak to a little bit of that. I can't speak to whether it should have been. I think it should have been corrected, but the city had a lawsuit with one bonding company, and that was for the public, all public infrastructure. There was a second issue with a different insurance bonding company.
And we collected $140,000 from that bonding company. That was specifically for phases eight, nine, and 15 and 16, which Gracie Lake is a part of. And those were the private, private parts of Fairview that would have private infrastructure. And we got that, the city received that money and then we paid that money directly to the Fairview HOA in June of 2000.
So we don't know if HOA spent that money on this problem to fix it or not.
Well, we don't know what they spent it on. Once we turned the money over to them, it was for the private infrastructure there. But we don't know what they spent it on.
So, so basically what you're saying is that, I mean, we can't do anything because it's, it's private property, correct?
Yeah, that's been our stance from the beginning, that the infrastructure in there is all private. They maintained and owned and that we legally can't go in there and done any work on it.
Okay. Is there, is there anybody on there from the HOA that we can hear from?
Yeah. Hello?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I need to click on something? This is the first time I've done this, guys, so I
No, just keeping, keeping name and address for the record.
Okay, it's Vaughn Oakley. It's 1041 Jarman Lane, Gallatin.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. What I have here, and hopefully it'll, hopefully it'll bring a little bit of clarity from the folks that live in Gracie Lake. The issues of the bonds and whatever was done with that, I'm vaguely familiar with. But not as to what at that time may or may not have done, been done with it. The, the issue is still unresolved. And here's what, here's what we would like to propose. And if I could just take a minute, I've, I've got an outline so I can do it quickly succinctly and hopefully not miss anything. If I may do that, again, it's my first time with you guys. If I get something wrong, I apologize. But what I'm, what I'm looking to provide here quickly for you guys. And ladies and gentlemen, is our current situation, our setup and our proposed solution. So I do want to first, of course, thank you guys and ladies for everything that you do. I know before I retired, when my, my phone rang, it generally didn't ring with good news. And from what I've been seeing, it looks like sometimes your, your meetings, some folks don't bring you good news either. But I think it's important that, that you know that neither I nor our HOA or any of the residents are coming to you with any hostility or confrontation or condemnation. Heaven knows there's enough of that going around. But we are, we are coming to you, ask for consideration in fixing a longstanding problem. And one that with homes being built has actually got, got worse. I believe Zach, who, who by the way, has been a real pleasure to, to, to work with, he's a great asset for you guys. Would say that from a city perspective, the, the solution, it really isn't difficult, nor is it major for the kind of day-to-day work that the city does. However, what seems to be happening here is that we're caught in what appears to be a gray area. And, and that's our issue to you. We, we understand protocols and, and operating practices and, and things that departments have to follow. However, I think we also believe that you, the city council, are empowered to look upon and judge what's right, or maybe more simply said, just what is the right thing to do regarding those gray areas when they arise. So regarding one of those matters, this is our situation. With heavy or sustained rain or fire hydrant water release, we get a flood of water off the back cul-de-sac of Grassland Chase. And it is so powerful that it literally moves river rocks and shoots water out of six inch pipe, 12 inches high. Now, the water that's not contained within that pipe can run three feet across and four inches deep out onto the walkway and literally across the street. It, it has that kind of volume and that kind of force. So this is the setup. About 90%, and Zach's familiar with all this. He's been out here several times. 90, about 90% of Grassland Chase Street is uphill with storm drains. However, the rest of the cul-de-sac area is reversed in that it is downhill toward Gracie with no drain. The cul-de-sac, and some of you gentlemen may have mentioned some earlier activities, but the cul-de-sac is curved with one cutout that allows the water to run off. Even so, it can get ankle deep and as such acts as a holding pond getting released. The water being funneled through this opening, this, this cutout portion of the, of the Fairview creates a, a quick and heavy flow. And as you've already made mention, the city blueprints show that the cutout was a planned drain that just never happened. I.e. there's the gray area. And we, the residents, have, have spent about $10,000 for water correction. And that's, that's for homes that are directly involved for water correction. And, and while we've got improvement, it's not a complete solution. The, the, as you can well imagine, the, the water, and some of y'all, I think you've even seen the videos and the pictures that we've taken to show the, the, the level of water, the, the force of it and, and where it's coming from. But what's happening is, and can continue to happen, is that the water's threatening the landscaping and the patio setups. Personally, I've got about 50,000 invested in my back, back patio area. And we've had the water actually reach out into it. And I'm just one of four, one of four of these, with these issues. So that's the problem, water going the wrong direction for the folks that are here down, downhill from it, if you will. So having presented that particular problem, I'll, I'll end with a proposed solution for you, for, for all of y'all's consideration. And if I may be so bold as to say that I'm going to put that solution in the realm of because it's the right, best thing to do. And that's what we're relying on you folks and your empowerment in some of these gray areas. One is establish a drain at the back of the cul-de-sac with the current cutout. That would be what the blueprints would have shown. Secondly, run an appropriate pipe from that drain down the connecting vacant lot, which is, which is right there. Mark Bosco is the owner of that lot and he's already, already agreed to it. And there is an easement. And right now it's easy, easy construction because there's no, well, it's a vacant lot. And then lastly, that pipe would connect to a current storm drain that is on Jarman Lane in front of that particular vacant lot. Now, in addition to that, Fairview Plantation HOA has agreed to pay for all, all the materials. And Zach outlined what that would be, all the materials. And then the city would do what it is that the city does best. And that's the infrastructure portion. So it's a, from our perspective, it's a win-win for the folks in Grassland be, because that cul-de-sac area, and there's two homes on either side of it, have water issues be, because it does act as a holding pond in heavy and sustained rains. And it's a, it's a win-win for the folks here at Gracie. And it's a, a win for the city because it's an issue that's kind of ugly that gets cleaned up. Now, maybe it even fits into the current storm water runoff projects. I, I, I don't know. I don't have any idea. But anyway, we, we, we just respectfully and hopefully are seeking your support because the bottom line of it is you guys are all we have left.
I got a question, Mr. Oakley.
Yes, sir.
Are you on the HOA board?
I am not on the board, but I was given authorization by Larry Rogers, who's president of the HOA.
What about, what, what did they do with that hundred and some thousand dollars?
I do not know.
Well, that's, that's what we got to find out.
I can ask that question. Now Larry is new to the board, but Dennis, Dennis Gavin, whom you know.
Yeah, Dennis didn't, Dennis didn't have any idea. I talked to him today.
Oh, okay. So Dennis, well, that takes, my gosh, where does that take us back to then?
Yeah. So, okay. All right.
Here's what, here's what the folks on the, here's what some of the folks on the, on the, on the board, Craig would say. Is that that money was spent in the new sections, the coves in, in that area over there as it was originally, as it was originally planned. I'm, I'm going to tell you what you're going to find because nobody really knows. It's going to be like a ping pong.
Good.
Yeah. Does that help? I, I can, if I can turn this thing on where you guys can see me, I don't have any problem doing that. I just know how to do it.
No, that's okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, I, I, I will just kind of summarize and invite Ms. Hamacalli to speak again. I think our concern is, and we spoke through it in depth today, is our concern is that this is a a private property that had plans to address the stormwater situation that were never completed. And we released bond money back to that development. And whether, where, where they spent, what they spent was up to them. But ultimately, that should have been completed by some funds through them because that's what their bond was providing for. And so for us to turn them around and do this would be a bit messy, I'm afraid.
Do you want me to weigh in, Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Hamacalli.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Councilwoman George, I know you're new to this, but I've spoken on this issue several times in the past to, to this council. We have something Tennessee called the public purpose doctrine. And that means that public funds, taxpayer dollars that we collect cannot be used on private property. That is a, a law that Tennessee binds this council by. And so what is being requested, if it was on public property and there's public infrastructure, then yes, the city could step in and, and assist. But the, as I understand, and you might ask Lance Wagner, as I understand, all of the issues are caused by infrastructure on the private property that was not built. And for the city doesn't have the legal authority to spend taxpayer dollars to go in on private property to make improvements.
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. And Mayor Page, thank you for your comments as well. I guess, I guess the way that we would look at that is that we are deemed private in our, in our infrastructure and, and private here because we've got gates. We're not Walmart. We're not a business. Of course, we, we pay, they pay taxes, we pay taxes, everybody pays taxes as we should. But it, that's the reason I use the word a gray area and I am not an attorney. I'm just a resident here. But I use that as gray area in the sense that if there's, if there's empowerment from y'all to see this, it's a small situation. It's a little thing relative to all the areas that y'all deal with. And, and I guess, I, I guess I'm repeating myself and saying that, that what I was hoping that, that y'all would be able to see is how this sets itself apart from what we would call private. Because I think that's probably more targeted toward businesses.
No, sir. And again, Lance Wagner may be able to answer this better. But I know there are several areas in the city that are private. And, and like this property, when issues come up, they have come to the city and they have requested that we step in. In a meeting today, I was advised that fairly recently another subdivision came in and we denied them as well because it's public infrastructure. And I will add, I was not here when all of this happened. But there is some documentation that the Fairview developers were given the opportunity when all the bond money was called to turn this into public infrastructure, if they would bring everything up to standards. And the developers decided not to do that. They wanted to remain private, have a gate, maintain their own streets and do all of that. And as a result, the city just absolutely is not able to step in and assist.
Susie, can I say something, please?
Absolutely.
I was brought into this situation back, probably before Christmas, and I rode my bicycle over there. Met with the neighbors. I watched the rain several different times to see how it's flowing. That's when I jumped out there to Zach. And, and I'm not an expert. And what I heard today that, that come out of your office today about the money that was spent several years ago, even before I moved in there, I didn't realize that until now. But my thing is about what I'd say is a gray area is I just felt that that water was coming off that street, which is a public street flowing onto private property. And that's what I was trying to get some clarification about whose responsibility is, is actually the water, who has that responsibility?
I can jump in quickly here, Sean. The water is just the water. The infrastructure is the pipes and the ground. The pipes that are up on Grassland Chase are public infrastructure that we maintain. The water that runs off is just like the rain. It's not necessarily owned by anybody. It's just the rain. Once it crosses into that private development, the private development has the responsibility of conveying that water from where it enters that private development to where it exits that private development. It's called the natural flow law that Tennessee operates under. And then when rain falls, there's a natural flow to where it's going. And in that case, that private development needs to maintain that natural flow through their developments. And I will say that this development had several iterations, but we even have plans on file with the infrastructure that was supposed to be installed at some point that would, that would have corrected this. And that infrastructure just was never installed or hasn't yet to be installed.
Yeah, I might just might say one other, other thing, and you, you guys will have to tell me when my time is up. I, I don't need to, to be inconsiderate at all regarding the, the, the water flow. If that street had been constructed from the beginning, all the way up to the top in the same slope, the water would have been flowing downward into the storm drains and not flowing off onto what everyone now or some of y'all are calling private structure. And, and we hadn't, we being the HOA or anyone else in this development had anything to do with how that street was constructed.
I, I understand Grassland Chase was built and in place many years prior to Gracie Lake and prior to this development being designed and constructed under Tennessee natural flow rule. The private development sort of noted that, seen that and taken that water and passed it through. And passing, you know, it would have created its own private infrastructure to pass that water through. And as the plans showed it was going to.
What would happen if we were dumping water onto, onto Grassland Chase? Say it was the reverse. We just put a pump over here and just, which of course we wouldn't do. But what if it was being dumped the other direction? Then, then how would the city view it?
If it was natural, it would be different. You can't pump it onto it.
No, no, I know that. And I would never even think I, that, that was
I know, but that's what you said, pumping onto it. No.
Yeah. And, and, and I corrected myself, but no.
What Lance is saying, it's a natural flow that way. So then y'all are responsible for that. And he said that, he said that y'all had infrastructure in place. It was supposed to be put in. It was never put in. That's what he's saying.
I hear that. I hear that.
That, that's the problem right there. It was supposed to be put in, but it was never put in.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what y'all are saying. I don't know that, so I can't, I can't refute it. Nor would I because I don't have the information. I was not here when all that was going on. I know that the developer went bankrupt. I mean, that specifically the developer that was doing Gracie Lake that probably wanted it to be private. As I think Mayor Page was saying, but, but in any event. So what I'm hearing, if I'm hearing this right, is that the city by law and by choice because of that and whatever went on with those bonds are not going to go forward with trying to relieve us of this water issue.
I, I would just say, I don't, I don't think it's by choice, it's by law. You know, we can't break the law and go, you know, private property. At the end of the day, that's what it's all about.
Yeah.
Doing work on private property. We can't do that.
I would not ask y'all, I would not ask anybody to break the law. I get, I, I understand that. I was hoping I could find some gray area, ladies and gentlemen. Y'all are not giving me any hope.
I will say that, you know, mo, most of us were not here during that time. So we had to do some research to try to figure this out. And we had reached out to the finance director and she's actually the one that was able to find that a check was written back in 2012. And we've started digging once this was going to be put on the agenda to try to make sure that, that we fully explained everything and that we knew exactly what had happened so we could that we fully explained everything and that we knew exactly what had happened so we could advise the council.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to take it back to the president of the HOA who won't know any more about it than I do, but, but you have been a wealth of information. And would it be possible that the situation presenting itself, that I can gather as much information from y'all that you have so that we here at Gracie can go to our own HOA?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll give you anything, you know, any of the documents that we have. You can contact me or Lance and we will help you to get those documents together.
Okay. All right.
And Mr. Oakley?
I, I think, I think, I thank y'all for your time. I know I've taken more than probably you, you normally do, and I appreciate that. And I, I respect you for it.
Ms. Oakley, I just want to say, we really do wish we could give you the answers that you want. We have to do this more than you know. So we appreciate your understanding and, and are just so very sorry that we can't, you know, accommodate the requests.
Well, let me just close with this. I appreciate all that y'all do and no, no one is right 100% of the time, but y'all are, are willing to serve and to stand up and do the best that you can with what you got. And it's appreciated.
That's kind of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Oakley. We appreciate you.
Okay, I guess I'll sign off here if I can figure out how to do it.
I'm playing from the wall.
Okay, moving right along. Let's go on to item number four, and that would be Public Works again.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to move on a resolution that would allow the Gallatin Beautiful Committee to apply for a grant from Walmart that would fund some litter pickup materials. It's, uh, no city funds involved. It's, and this is just permission.
That was Jimmy Overton and second by JG Alexander. So, um, roll call, please.
Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is, Zero Nays.
Thank you. Um, moving on to a discussion of appointments of Public Works Superintendent, Connie Floyd. Floyd, I'm sorry.
You might, Ms. Floyd, do you want me to run this or do you want to start out?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, you know, you, as Ms. Floyd shared with you all last week, there were two preferred candidates. You know who they are. Earlier this evening, I forwarded you the scoring from the expert panel. And what we have done with recent hires is this council has moved forward a resolution to counsel. At this point, it is still blank. It doesn't have a name or a salary, but typically what you have done is authorize HR and/or HR or HR and/or the mayor to come back with a salary for the proposed employee. Talk to them, figure out what they're wanting, and then you guys would typically pass it through at the next council meeting. So I think at this point, we're looking for this council to agree on a recommendation to fill that position. And then next week, we would actually make the hire official, or not next week, because we don't have a council meeting next week. But the next council meeting, we would make that official.
Ms. George, if I may, I'd like to make a recommendation and make a motion that we send the council the name of Mr. Richard DePree. And at that time, that we'll hear from personnel and the mayor on several requirements at that council meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. That would be a motion by Mr. Overton and second by Mr. Hayes. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is, Zero Nays.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to other business.
I have a bunch of things.
Yeah.
Do y'all want to go first and I'll go last?
Okay. I've got one thing. The, uh, as y'all know, the Cruisin' moved from City Hall to Triple Creek Park. Now the Cruisin' has split. They've got half at the park and half are wanting to come back. The Uptown Cruisin', what they're wanting to do is come, I think, two Saturdays a month, starting April 24th. And what they want to do, they're not wanting to close off the parking lot. They're just wanting to use the parking lot there by City Hall. Use the restrooms at City Hall. And I talked to the mayor about that. She said, that's no problem. They set the timer. But what we need to do is if everybody's in agreement with that, we just need to get approval on that. And they're not going to close off the parking lot. They're just going to use spots in the parking lot.
Do you mind letting me know what that means? What is Cruisin'? It's a car show.
Car show.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's okay. I didn't know either.
All right.
The only thing that I would say is if you do decide to go this direction, once the construction of the courthouse begins, parking could be severely limited, at which point the merchants on the square will likely speak up and say, wait, we can't, you know, fill this parking lot with a car show.
Well, and if, and if it becomes a problem, I, I think they're, under the understanding that, you know, we can, we can change our minds later on or something like that or change it. So.
I'm not going to recommend it. We've already went through this. We sent out surveys and everything else, and I'm not going to support it.
Yeah, the surveys came, the, the surveys came back. I looked at those and there wasn't, everybody didn't survey it. So there was only like seven that came back and six were no and one was yes.
That's right. So that means that's a majority, super majority.
But I mean, that's not everybody on the square though, is what I'm saying.
Doesn't make sense.
So this is the, the group that did do it on the square?
No, no, it's not the same group. No, it's not.
No, it's, it's half of the group. They're, they split, kind of is what they did, Linda.
It's two or three that got upset and decided they want to start their own car show now, Linda.
Yeah, there's like seven of them.
The other ones are still over at the Civic Center?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like seven of them or.
I think seven, yeah.
And now that, and now that we are, now that they are closing off the library parking lot and stuff, we're going to have a nightmare then with our parking as it is. At City Hall.
So where do we go with this?
The only thing that, that I would like to say is, is I, you know, I supported the first group at the get-go. I, I kind of felt like I was one of the persons leading the charge. I hate that they split up. I really do. But I think you've got to be fair to the public. I mean, uh, if we allowed one group to do something and put something out there, I mean, shouldn't we allow the other group to do the same, to be all fairness? So everybody's opinion on that.
You have an example on it, so.
What'd you say, Councilman Fan?
You have an example on that.
Yeah, when the other group was together, they had it. Yeah, but now that the group has split up, another part of the group want to have it.
I'm not understanding what Sean, what, what Sean's statement is, what he means by it.
I'm just saying, being fair to the public, if, if one group is having it and if somebody else wants to do it, I mean, is there something that we can only have one of them in the city or have two? I don't think the city personally needs two of them, but I want to be fair to the public.
Yeah.
Am I saying that right, Page?
Yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying. I mean, we have to give our public equal opportunity, but that doesn't mean that we can easily accommodate them. And I think that's the rub we're up against here. I mean, we had a fight last time because of the closure of the parking lot and the stress that that put on the downtown merchants. So when Councilman Hayes asked me about this, that's when I said, you know, I can't even see a scenario whereby they could come back to City Hall and close the parking lot. I think they have to share the lot.
And they don't want to, they don't want to close the parking lot. So I think that's, that's, that's the issue, their understanding of that.
But even still, there could be a challenge with, um, you know, with parking being at a premium as that courthouse construction goes underway. We won't know until we kind of start to see spring and weekends and weekend evenings, but I, I really think our bet, our, our greater responsibility is to do what we can to help our square restaurants and merchants really thrive during this time. And if we can accommodate somebody, great, but if we can't, um, you know, maybe they can look for another location. You know, within the city that they could also use that may be our public property.
And that's what I'm saying. If it becomes a problem, then they're, they're willing to move if it does become a problem.
How much space do they take up?
Man, what was that?
Don't know. Some reverb going there. I mean, they could take up a quarter of the lot, a fifth of the lot. They could, you know, in theory, take up half the lot. I don't think they'd take up more than that.
So how will we know if it's a problem? Because the people, I mean, if the people looking for parking places wouldn't, unless they complain, how will we even know?
If the lot would be full, I would say if the lot is full at the time that they're having these car shows, then we probably need to ask them to find an alternative space.
I think it would be incumbent upon this body to determine what that looks like before it occurs. We can't just wait and see what would happen. I think this body needs to determine beforehand, and, and that probably doesn't allow us to make that decision tonight.
So, you know, you have an option to move it forward for approval at council or you could table it and, and think about it or?
I, I think the, I think the court, I mean, the library parking lot's already been roped off. So I think in the next three or four weeks, you're going to be able to tell how, how bad it's going to get down here as far as parking goes. So I would say let's wait for two or three weeks and see what happens.
When do they start their shows?
They want to start in April, but we can't wait two or three weeks. We got to decide now. It's either yay or nay. And I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we move it on. So does anybody else want to second it?
I'll second. Second.
Okay, that would be Councilman Hayes and second by Councilman Fan.
Could, could you repeat the motion point? I'm sorry. I had something come up on my computer.
We're just making a motion if we send it on, council.
And I do think it needs to be a resolution on the council next week, because I do think the public needs to be made aware because the square should have the opportunity to weigh in on it. I will certainly make sure that I'm here this Saturday evening to see what the parking situation looks like, so I can advise you of that.
That'd be great.
And I was just notified too, that the 24th is Square Fest, so they'll probably start at the weekend after that. So it won't be that weekend.
The 24th of April.
Yep. So it'll be the probably 31st. Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's have the roll call, Ms. Kitchell.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Upstate.
Six Is and one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I mean, you go ahead with my other business. Well, first of all, I want to make sure for any public that might be attending the meeting that we introduce our interim fire chief, Tracy Townsend. He's on the meeting. And I think that people should see who you are. I don't know if you want to say anything or not. You can unmute yourself if you want to, but don't feel like you have to.
Say something, Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is my first Zoom call, so I like the old saying, the first rodeo, this is my first rodeo is a Zoom call. I want to say, folks, that, uh, it's, uh, I'm so proud to be a part of, serve this city. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I just want to say, in the short few days that I've got to step in here, my first full day, we've really got a department of young men that are just eager, they're talented, and they're just ready to serve their town. And I'll just look forward to working alongside of them. Uh, I appreciate you giving me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Townsend.
Welcome.
That's our first item. The second item is, um, it was brought to our attention that we haven't moved forward on the lighted crosswalks in the downtown area. So Mr. I think, yeah, Zach is, Mr. Zach Wilkinson is still with us, even though his time is now limited, as there's a a, a new superintendent in the pipeline. He was going to talk to you guys about that and what we might do. Um, if y'all want to go ahead and move it forward before we get through the budget.
Yes, thank you. So, um, just wanted to bring this up again. It was discussed several months ago. And, uh, really, this was for the lighted crosswalks at the locations in front of Swainy Swift's. And then the, the two locations in front of the library, along with the crosswalk in front of City Hall. The total cost for all five crosswalks that those three locations entail would be $132,000. Um, that's what Public Works done, they install. That's for materials and that would also incorporate public, or the city taking over one of those light circuits downtown that currently Gallatin Electric Department maintains. We pay them to maintain it, but, um, there is a little bit of infrastructure that we have to build to incorporate that. And that's to power the lights for these crosswalks.
So basically, several months ago, this council discussed it and y'all decided that you wanted to do it and you instructed Public Works to look for grant funding, which they have done, um, but we never allocated any funds. I do think, and you may want to ask Ms. Nichols about this, but I do think there is some old, um, or some, not old, unused bond funds that could be allocated for this if you so desired. You could wait until the budget year, um, you know, if options are yours, but, um, I know that they're getting tired. We've got a great enhancement for downtown and a great, you know, safety measure to install. If you're inclined to go ahead and do it, I think we can do it.
Mayor, on behalf, on behalf of Councilman John D. Alexander and his little green man, I'm going to make a motion, we move this on to council. And in the meantime, in the next two weeks, Ms. Nichols can bring us to us and let us know how we're going to fund it, because I sure want to know how we're going to fund it. I know we could take it out of junk fund if we have to, but I'd like to make a motion, we send it on to council.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion to send it on to council by Mr. Overton and, uh, second by John D. Alexander.
I will say that at the beginning of this meeting, a friend of mine sent me a picture of one of those little green men.
Down in front of the library, yeah.
Smashed on the pavement.
I stopped and prayed over.
Hey, one thing I'd like to say about the light deal is, uh, I know Paige is the one, I think, well, that discovered that as far as telling me about it. And when I was, uh, at the place in Florida and I actually seen it and how it worked, I was, I, I just thought, I mean, it was a no brainer seeing that. I think this is a great thing for Gallatin and, uh, I think it will add some safety to our area. And, and I look forward to seeing this come to, uh, fulfillment.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchell, would you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Is and Zero Nays.
Thank you.
Next, um, I have, um, this was actually a resolution, or I'm sorry, ordinance that was sent to you this afternoon by James Fenton. And because you may not check your email, I'm going to go ahead and read it to you. And it's regarding, um, an allocation of funds received for Gateway Drive. So this is an ordinance appropriating $1 million from donations from businesses to Gateway Drive Extension Construction. Be it ordained by the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, that the sum of $1 million is hereby appropriated from the donations from Business Revenue Account 110-36710-256 to the Economic Development Agency expense account for construction of the Gateway Drive Extension for Project Warhawk. So that's the essence of the motion. Of course, you guys have to decide whether you even want to consider it. Since it wasn't on the agenda, if you do, then it would move forward to council next week for, or not next week, because we don't have a meeting, but for passage in April. And, um, and that's why Mr. Fenton wanted to bring it up this evening. He may wish to weigh in further.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, we received, uh, notice last Friday afternoon that we had the $1 million donation by Facebook to continue the construction of Gateway Drive. And that's why it's not in your packet at this point in time. It is part of And that's why it's not in your packet at this point in time. It is part of the the total agreement we have with them for them to pay for Gateway Drive Extension. But just the timing of the arrival of those funds in our account eliminated the possibility for us to put that in your packet. So we're just asking that you consider that this evening so we can pass it this month. Otherwise, it might be until May that that might be able to go through, and there's a possibility that the the funds not being available would slow down the construction of the Gateway Drive Extension. So we ask that you move that forward.
Motion is sent out.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by John D. Alexander, second by Lyndon Love.
Well, did they need to make a motion to consider it, Ms. Hamacali, or is it okay since this is a work session?
It's okay since it's work session. You're thinking about when they bring something.
Thank you. And roll call, Ms. Kitchell?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Sean, you're muted.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I might also inject that we would be coming to you for a request for thirty-six thousand dollars for the city's portion of right away acquisition for improvements at three intersections, Airport Road and thirty-one E Airport Road and Gateway Drive and thirty-one E Airport Road rather and twenty-five. This body has previously approved the application for the SIA grant, which is paying all of the money except for this thirty-six thousand dollars. And so that will be coming to you in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
It will be able to come to a work session right first.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, the next item on my list is this something we haven't visited lately, but you're gonna love to hear about it. Our, I believe it's called Liberty Branch Park, the Rotary Park. Right now, we or or in recent weeks, we have learned that Morning Rotary, who, you know, built the park, took responsibility for the maintenance of the park, is now disbanding, leaving us with no one to care for that park. David Brown, our Parks and Recreation Director, has said that they can take care of it starting April first, but obviously, there will be some budget implication, particularly in the coming year. So I don't see that we can abandon it and not do anything with it. I think we, you know, I I hope that the other Rotary Club will, you know, pitch in and help continue to get things done there, but the maintenance, I think, has got to become ours and.
Mayor, if you might, I I am the incoming president of the Newton Rotary Club, and that is one of the things that will be brought before the the Board of Directors this day after tomorrow. We're not sure where that's going to go, but this will be offered up as a possibility for future maintenance. I'm not sure how much we're willing to take on, but we will be discussing that this week.
So so should we put this off to our next council meeting, Mr. Fenton? Do you have time to meet with him?
I think it needs mowing.
The mowing part, I think, needs to be addressed this evening.
Yeah.
Can I ask something? Is this the park they used to call, well, the one that's next to Lowe's down there?
No, yeah, don't name it.
There, I'll pass there every day, and there's a lot of people in that park that use that. And and can you tell me why the Rotary Club is abandoning it?
They are disbanding as a club. It was a small to begin with.
Okay.
And said the club is no longer going to exist.
I would like the way the public is using that in a way it's set up now, nice and neat. I think we need to take care of.
Um, I think Mr. Brown is on the phone. I don't know if you want to say anything further about it.
Mr. Brown?
He may need to be unmuted, Jeff.
Is you have to unmute yourself. There'll be star six.
You're unmuted now, David.
I'm here. Yeah, I think we can, I talked to the mayor during budget meetings, and we can mow it and keep it clean, but we don't have any funds to do any improvements. That would be up to the council to approve more funds or the Rotary, Moon Rotary take on putting the picnic shelters. I think they had some plans to put some picnic shelters and some stuff. And so as far as getting it mowed and picking up the paper, we we will, we can handle that.
Okay, and let let James come back, you know, later at a later date, let him let us know what's going on, you know, as far as if they want to put picnic shelters up or something like that, that'd be fun.
Not really.
Yeah, I would like.
Go ahead, David. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like if in the future they want to do some of that, that they would come back to council because the more they do that, the more maintenance it'll be, and then more repairs or whatever, and then it would be a, you know, an increase in the budget.
Yeah, and and our concern is is if if we put in picnic tables and those kind of things, we have to make them ADA compliant, which increases the cost. So I'm not sure exactly the direction we're going to go with that. We may not elect to do any improvements, just simply maintain it as it is.
You know, I don't have a problem with the Caldwell Park, you know, but I really feel like that we have abandoned Clivey Park over in my district. I haven't heard anything, you know, money that anytime I want to improve or do a community center over there, that we don't have the funds to do that. So I just feel like you abandoned Clivey Park. I just wish you all would consider doing something to Clivey Park.
And then, hey, for information, this is not Caldwell Park. This is the other park.
Okay, well.
Yeah, it's not the Caldwell. Yeah, it's the other one.
Councilman Alexander, I know that David Brown and I have discussed it quite a few times, and hopefully, we'll have a wonderful idea at some point in the sooner rather than later future, but.
Okay.
Far beyond mowing, so.
Okay, just tell me about the waiting.
Is the Rotary Park, is it property city owned, or is it federally owned?
Core.
Or.
Or of engineer.
That's who found us.
We have to.
Do they own the whole park, or they got a shoreline?
They own the whole thing.
You've been over some, haven't you, Councilman Fan?
Yes. I was kayaking there this morning.
Move along?
All right, either you.
Next item, Kona Ice, you know, they do snow cones. And I may not be calling them what they call them, and I apologize if I'm not, but Kona Ice would like to do a tax day snow cone, if whatever they call their product giveaway here at City Hall. And they're doing a lot of things with the parks, but certainly they want to do this, but David and I both felt like we needed your blessing if that was okay. They're giving them away. They're not charging.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Hey, Mr. Brown, I think that's good enough to let them know that they are welcome to proceed with doing that. Next item, Fourth of July, any thoughts on what you think we should do this year? It falls on a Sunday. I don't think we have anyone jump, jumping up and down to do a festival. My thought at this point is proceed with the fireworks, but I'm open to suggestions, ideas, disagreement.
How did it go last year?
I mean.
The fireworks happened. They were lovely.
Yeah, and it was everybody happy without having all the booths and activities, or do does anybody know?
Well, they all wanted something to eat, of course, but it went good.
I'd like to get back to normal.
Yes, that's what I'm about to say. Yes.
Yeah. I'd love to be able to open it up where we could have some vendors and people show up and by July.
Most people should have their shots.
The only problem, the only problem is you don't know what's gonna happen between now and then. That's the only problem.
Well, the bigger problem that I have a long history with is finding someone to organize and then work that event because it is.
A lot of it, it's a lot of work.
Well, why don't we just do the the fireworks here, just that only, but allow them to get closer to them where we didn't allow to last year, unless we have another major outbreak. Just call the vendors off and do a firecracker show and.
How much, how much in advance do we have to make this decision?
I think it'd be good to go ahead and make, just kind of make your thoughts known because I mean, if somebody does come out of the woodwork and they say they'd like to organize the festival, we want to say, sure, go ahead. You know, one thought I had, you know, Mr. Brown, we may want to offer three spots for food trucks in Triple Creek, and and you charges, but charge a fee for that. But, you know, so there's some kind of in the middle things that we might do that aren't going to require a lot of volunteer management.
Brown might want to do it for fundraising for Miracle Park.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know that. I haven't asked him, but he might want to do it for a fundraiser for Miracle Park.
We want. Tracks idea.
So let me ask you this. Is everybody keen to continue on with doing the fireworks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So yes, I say we leave it at that for right now, and then if somebody shows interest or somebody has a great idea, or if we want to find a way to serve some food, we can certainly open that door.
Yes.
Perfect.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Awesome.
Um, next, I just want to make this council aware that our Senior Advocacy Committee is now working through becoming an AARP livable community. We're getting ready to do a survey. They actually conduct it to kind of give us an assessment of where we are accommodating the older population in our city, and then we also internally are going to kind of try to do what am I calling it, Jeff, an asset survey. We're trying to get a list of all of our assets that are meaningful to our senior residents and so that we will be able to measure it over excuse me, measure it over the years and see how we might improve upon that. And that's just informational for your benefit, done cost to see anything. We talked about it many, many months ago. And then the final thing that I have this evening for you is resuming in-person meetings. Actually, I have a twofold question for you. When are we going to resume? And then secondly, when we do resume, how do you guys want to handle the meetings? Do you still want to have a Zoom option? Do you want public commenters to be able to participate by Zoom? Really, IT and Mr. Hinchell kind of need to know these things as we move forward now. That it's especially important if you plan to resume in-person meetings in April, not so important if you don't intend to, but regardless, I think we need to talk about that because guess what? This is our last meeting in March.
Is chambers ready?
Yes.
Yeah. What is Governor Lee's, did he change his?
The end of April. Goes to the end of April, I think, Ellen.
Yeah, at this point, Governor Lee's executive orders allow for virtual meetings through the end of April.
I'm ready to go on and start back.
I'm ready to leave it to Zoom till the end of April.
I'm ready to get out.
We've been doing it every Tuesday anyway.
Yeah, I mean, my thing is, what what are we gonna have to do with the council chambers? I mean, you know, as far as the public coming in, as far as everything else, what are we gonna do?
I mean, it's going to be open to the public if we meet in council chambers, so.
I mean, are you going social distance, or what are you gonna do? You gonna have so many seats?
Yeah, I mean, we we've got it blocked off now like we did, like we have for the better part of the year to encourage social distancing, and and it may be that we have to accommodate people in other parts of the building and let them come in if they have public comment or whatever, but it's just, you know, something we'll have to manage.
So the question is, would be when we are live, do we want to continue with Zoom or just keep it on the public station?
The Zoom would be for the public. I think the council members, you know, should, if we're going to resume in-person meetings, we need to resume in-person meetings. And then.
And then. And then.
I said we just get them, I said we'll get back to like we used to do. I think we just get back to it and put it on our put it on the public TV channel like we've always done it. Just get on back to like we used to do before this ever happened.
Without the Zoom.
Yes. Too many people have problems getting on Zoom.
Right, and we have problems sometimes ourselves getting on Zoom.
So I just say we get on back with it like we used to do it and be done with it.
Okay, so. Okay.
What if we just limit the people that can come in if they want to speak, they stand out in the hallway or outside? I'm kind of, we sitting here with this Plexiglas shielding ourselves, and they won't have that.
I think if we have too many people, we have a, I think Jeff and him has a big TV now that we can put out in the hallway, and then they can come in to speak if they need to come in to speak, but I think we have a big projection screen there that they can put out in the hallway if there's too many people that tries to come in.
Well, that'd be all right, long thing, social distance.
I just, I don't, I don't want to see it cost any more money for us to set it up, you know, if we've got enough money when we can do this.
I think it's already set up, Mayor.
Yeah.
Is is everything set up?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we're still getting pizza over here on Tuesday. Yeah.
We got chicken wings here.
We can, we can continue the dinners after the meeting.
So it's me.
I didn't hear that, but anyway.
I'm talking at our houses.
I do want to make clear when you're saying you're going to limit the public, that you don't really mean you're going to limit.
No, they all come just like they used to come. They used to come in, they all come back to see us. I love them to come here. I love them to come back and see us.
Can we limit how many come in here at one time?
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, what are we gonna do? Just pack the house?
No, it'd be just like churches, you know, you have to do a social distance, and you have some rows that's taped out where you can't sit and spaced six foot apart until.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I asked a minute ago. Do we have it set up to where we can do this stuff? And everybody said, yes, we do, so.
Yeah.
We got chairs, rows of chairs that's covered and some rows of chairs that's open. I I think it could be done.
Okay.
All right, people show up. I mean, we would have to put them throughout the building, but.
Most time, we don't have that many people unless it's some kind of issue.
The concern that I would be ha- have is accommodating people who aren't comfortable getting out that may have public comments to offer. I mean, that's why I asked that about Zoom. Also need to know from you guys if you want to continue streaming the meetings on Facebook. That I think, I think it's appropriate, Ms. George, if I may, that this council make a motion on whether or not to resume meetings in April, and then whether or not they want to allow the Zoom and Facebook options, something if those need to be separate votes or not, but.
Okay, so the first option is, do we want to meet in person in beginning in April? Do we have a motion to do that?
Part April, you're talking about beginning of April, then April.
Well, the first meeting is April sixth. As we're talking about this, since we have the option to, with the Governor's Lee's, Governor Lee's executive order to stay until the end of April, that based on what Councilman Hayes is saying, maybe we should keep that date, and so we have more time for everybody to get their shots and make that a little bit more feasible for people to be together. Go ahead.
If you look on our comments, the last few meetings we've had, everybody's ready for us to get back in person. So I'm gonna make a motion. We start back.
Not everybody.
I'm gonna make a motion to start back May the first. Live meetings on May the first, and we and we broadcast them on our cable TV channel as we used to do before this pandemic started.
You said by April, go to May.
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, Councilman Overton has made the motion, second by John D. Alexander.
Question, do we want to, do we want to put this on? Do we want to do it on Facebook too, Jimmy?
My motion was just that we get back on cable TV to the general public like we always done. That's my motion.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchell?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you. So I think that takes in all of those.
Every time.
Questions, yes. Okay.
I have a couple, oh, are you finished, ma'am? I have a couple, oh, are you finished, ma'am?
Do you have anything else?
No, I'm finished. That's the end of my lengthy list, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I've, I've got about three things, Ms. George. We've already addressed my little flag man. We won't have to worry about seeing him land in the street no more. Mr. Turtle A, the Zach Wilkinson. Zach, are you still on here?
Yes, sir.
Zach, you remember over there off of Bligh Street where Ms. McMurry had that water drain is running down from Hall Street down back of our house that you and I and Nick had looked at? Where do we stand on that? Are we?
Was it Hall or Carson?
It was Carson Street where Ms. McMurry lived, but the water is coming down off of Hall Street from the back.
Um, I know we did some kind of interim measures. We cleaned out that ditch and pipe the best we could. And I believe Nick's group was looking at kind of a bigger picture design in that area. And I'm not sure where that's at. I can get with them and get you an update on where that's at. And we'll take a look if there's any more maintenance.
Mr. Wagner, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Mr. Wagner, do you know anything? He's here too. Hollywood. Maybe not. Oh, well, we'll find out.
And, and the last thing is on the last council meeting. I want to apologize to my fellow council persons, to all the department heads, to all my constituents, to all the community, to all the citizens. I was not feeling well on last Tuesday, but I was very concerned about the city council meeting, what was going on. And I think the way I looked, I guess, some people thought maybe I just didn't care, weren't concerned about what was being said or what, what was going on. But I beg your difference, I was very concerned. That's the reason why I was here. Yes, I was kind of on the weather, but unless I got some kind of disease that's catching, I'm going to try my best to always make the council meeting because I've always tried to be present for all meeting because the business of the city is very dear and important to me. So, but if I offended anyone in any way on the way I looked last week, I do apologize. But I, I meant no, there was no intention on me to overlook or neglect anyone. And that was not my intention, but I was feeling bad. Feel good today. One thing about a good man, you can get him down, but you can't keep him down. So, thank you.
Councilman Alexander, I think more people were concerned about you than they were.
Oh, I had a lot to call and I have some of the council members call. That, that meant a lot to me. I appreciate it more than you know, but nobody bought me any chicken at all.
Well, we didn't know, we thought you felt so bad, you couldn't even eat chicken.
You still chew, I can still chew.
I left it on his front porch, he must have missed it.
Yeah.
Ms. George, I have one thing.
Yes.
You too, John D.
Yes, I am.
Ms. George, if, if I may, I would like before the next committee meeting, if we could, I'm going to ask Ms. Flood, if she could get all of us council folks, uh, the job descriptions for all of our department heads. As you know, we're in the process of hiring two department heads at this time. And I just happened to inquire about the job descriptions and I looked at them. And for whatever reason, our job descriptions have been changed a lot since we hired our last fire chief and our department heads. And I've noticed some things on there that I have a real problem with that got changed that some way, and, and even I understand that they're in the process of sending out the fire chiefs, and I understand just this week, it's gotten changed again. Uh, so I would just ask before we send any job descriptions out, before we post any, that us council folks get an opportunity to review all of them. And let's look and see what's been going on the last four or five years and just give us an opportunity to look at our job descriptions for our department heads.
Well, I, I can tell you that I think the only job descriptions that been to change since this council approved the job, all the job classifications back when, when I was first on board, although all that had kind of already been in motion. Um, I think the only one that was changed was the fire chief, and that was with the last hire because it was done after we had MTS evaluate our fire department make recommendations. And so that was changed when we posted it last Friday. Um, we did take out the masters required for that position and changed it to masters preferred. But beyond that, we didn't change anything on it.
There, I, I, I don't want to argue about it. And that's why I just sent them off too, so we can look at them. But there's a lot more that's been changed since I've been on here. Uh, we used, we used to change all of our department heads, used to come to the council before any of them got changed. And I had a conversation today with Ms. Flood and I asked her about two or three other ones. And it's obvious that they've all been changed and not just one. And, and a couple of them just doesn't make sense why one would say one thing and another one, which is really the same type job in public service, and it would say something completely different. And I just think that we need to all look at them. And, and in the past, anytime an apartment head job description has been changed, this council has changed it and no one else.
Well, that's not per our code, but the code requires that they get approved when we do the pay study. And then, and then the HR director can make changes upon recommendation to the mayor. But I really don't think we've made any beyond that one with the last hire for the fire chief. And then this time we changed it where it's masters preferred and not required. Um, and, and you know, that whole pay scale thing that was done by Ms. McGrath back in like, I guess in fourteen, fourteen and fifteen, you know, that, all those classifications came with job descriptions that corresponded to the pay scale at which they were set. And so that's where that came from. And so whether or not you all reviewed them individually, you did technically approve them and.
You say technically, what do you mean technically?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know how in-depth you looked at them. I mean, you, you guys voted on it and approved it, but I don't know if you read them and said, oh, let's, let's modify. I mean, because every job within the city had a job description associated with it.
If we, and I know we asked them to look at all of our job descriptions, even from the base ones down, all the way up, we asked them to look at them. But as far as changing them, I don't think any council folks on here was, was aware that any of them got changed to the significant part that some of them got changed to. So I'm just asking that we look at all of them between now and the next committee meeting, that's all.
I'd like to see them too.
Yes.
Well, we have an opportunity to see both before and after.
What now? Oh, I don't, I, I mean, I'm, I don't know. I guess somewhere the old job descriptions would exist, but.
I would hope so.
If we want to change them, we can change them back ourselves, can't we?
Yes.
Well, you would have to.
The code says.
Yeah, you'd have to listen to Ms. McCauley for guidance on that, so.
And I will say that in having worked with the prior HR director and our new HR director, what I recall is exactly what Maya Brown said, is that all the job descriptions, I know with my department and with all departments came when McGrath put that pay study in and they were all approved at that time. Um, Ms. Flood did ask me this week if the one change could be made to take the masters required out of the fire chief. And I told her in looking at the code, there are several uh, pay, pay grades that are together, several department heads, they're all assigned pay grades. And in that classification, I don't remember, there are four or five. And I asked her to please look at all of the job descriptions in that particular section and to look at the ones that are above that group. And we did find that for the fire chief, that was the only one that had the masters required. And the code requires that if they're in the same pay grade, they have the same qualifications and the same requirements according to our code. So based on the code, it says that she can go to the mayor and have that changed. And I think that's what she did.
Okay, and, and I'm not blaming Ms. Flood or anybody out of state. I'd like to see them. I think all of the, I think all the council people would love to see what our job description say for our department heads at this time. That's all.
Thank you. So do we have a motion to do this or is?
We don't need, we don't need a motion.
All right. And Mr. Councilman Overton, did you say at the next work session?
Yeah.
Did you say you're hiring too? I didn't know if you wanted to look at it before you.
No, 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 no. I mean, we, we've, we made the motion to send his on to council, so I, I'm okay with it. I just think we need to look at them going forward.
Gotcha, okay.
And, and by the way, well, I'm not going to get into it on this, on this Zoom meeting, but, but I'd just like to look at them.
Okay, so they'll be sent to all of us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, do we have any one from, any department heads that would like to make a statement or talk about something? Done?
Now, Mr. McCord has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't see that here.
I'm seeing it.
Mr. McCord?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, let me share my screen.
Just get to see it, okay.
Last, last council committee meeting, I presented to the committee a proposal by one of our developers to donate some property to the city for a park or I guess whatever the city could use it for. This is the southerly portion of the property that was approved for vintage at Baker's Crossing. So the northerly portion of it would be developed as their apartment complex. And this southerly portion here that I've outlined in yellow on the east shore of, uh, East Fork of Station Camp Creek, it's about four and a half acres or so, would be the area that they're considering to donate to the city. And there you can see generally the, the bottom portion of this one is cut off. But this one, you can see generally where it is in proximity to the proposed apartments. And the creek is over here on the left side of the screen and it's outlined here in yellow. And most of all, almost all of that property is in a flood zone. So you couldn't build any structures in there or anything and elevate it or anything. The only thing we had intended to do is long range that we have, and we got this easement for Greenway that would allow us to build an important segment of the Greenway, which will tie the west side of town together to downtown. This is the site plan that was approved or master plan that was approved for the apartment complex. So you can see that it's all in the northerly portion of the property. And this would be this, this southerly portion adjacent to Highway 31 or Nashville Pike and the creek. And just to the west of, uh, uh, Cree, Cree Light Realty and the Reliant Bank. And there's a house back here next to it as well. Still residents back there. And there's a small office, I'm not sure what it's used for, next to the Crylike Realty. But y'all had asked a question to find out how much it would cost to maintain it. I think Councilman Overton did. Mr. Brown from the Recreation Department sent me a memo, say it would be about $5,000 a year to police the area, mow it and pick up trash occasionally. So with that, I, I know that y'all wanted to get some of that information. We are going to be meeting with the applicant or they have submitted a final master development plan. So I would like to be able to give them some direction on where the city is interested in moving to either accept the donation, I guess through a quick lane meet or some other way. But they want to be assured that they can make sure their density is in credit included.
Bill, I guess my question would be, since you've had the conversation, Mr. Brown, about taking care of it, does Mr. Brown feel like that it's something we could use for a park for our city?
Well, I haven't talked to him about that. Uh, I guess he's still on the line. We do have, again, the Greenway corridor would extend through it. So at least a portion of it would be used for the Greenway. And again, most of it is flood plain, so not too much could be you developed in there.
So I, I, I guess that's my question. I, I'm not whether for it or against it, I'm not asking that. I'm just asking the questions. I know a lot of people give us property and give us stuff. It's because they don't want to take, they don't want it, don't want to take care of it. And that's all my question is, is it something that's useful to us in the city? Or is it just they're giving it to us just to be given it to us because they don't want to take care of it? That's my question.
I, I'm not sure.
David Brown Parks Director.
Hi, David.
Yeah, we, I, I've looked at it and it'll be a nice layer, like safe for the trailhead. And then the, the, the creek there has got enough water in it and people do fish. And we think in the future, we could put a little own land dock for, not out in the water, but our own land dock for people to fish. And you couldn't have more, I don't think, but 25 or 30 cars down there anyway. But yeah, I think it'd be a, a, a good shot. And then if, when they, when the state builds the bridge, we're hoping that they'll build it where we can go under the bridge, then we could go from Liberty Park over to this park with a bridge over that little creek that would, it'd make a, a nice amenity.
Okay, that, that answered my question. That says a lot there. So, Mr. McCord, do you need a motion from us that we accept it or that, that we let you negotiate, we accept it? Or what do you need from us?
Well, I would like some direction from the council to discuss this with the developer and get your interest in us pursuing it.
You got direction.
I'll make a motion that if you need one, I'll make a motion that you have the discretion that we accept it, if that's what we need to do.
Is this something we move on to council?
Bill, you just want our opinion or you, you need a motion, a resolution, something on it? What do you need?
Well, we'll bring, if, if the developer is in agreement based on discussion tonight, we will bring something a, a more formal process for acceptance and probably some sort of review of a deed or anything like that, or legal description uh, for formal acceptance of the property as opposed to being in concert with their development plan.
Good.
I think, I think just the indication to Bill that you view it as a beneficial asset is enough for him to move forward with.
Right, yeah. And I'm. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? I do not see hands raised on my end.
See any hands either.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, most adjourn.
Y'all better tell me happy birthday. I spent.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Put a card in your mailbox.
Well, it didn't have any money in it if you did.
I'll put it on your front porch with some chickens.
Yeah, I want some chickens on my front porch.
I'll come by and blow it for you.
Do it.
Go out there and check your mailbox right now.
Yeah.
Have a good night, Joe.
Our next meeting is April the 6th.
That's right.
Have a good night, Joe.
Everybody be blessed.
Bye.